As he always does, so. Good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, January 13th to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Let's think about this week and especially next week. Pray for peace, keep everybody safe, and we have a lot of things going on. So as the inauguration happens, let's make sure we all do our part to make sure everybody's peaceful and safe as we can. So a moment of silence. Thank you. And if Alderman Jobchin would be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Brian, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you with extras. I love it. So, thank you, everyone. So, good evening again as we begin the meeting of the city council. Like to welcome everybody in attendance and everybody viewing on different electronic devices. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that you're talking to the council. You're also talking to your fellow Davenporters and everybody else in the surrounding region. We're happy you're participating in your government and ask that you reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. If you have your electronic devices here, if you put them on silent or turn them off so they don't get in the way of someone talking tonight. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. We'd ask that you give your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember to be respectful. We'll be respectful of you. And as we know, everybody will, they'll remember the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you, everyone. So, as we move on, will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for December 9? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update for this evening?
A reminder that we will begin our fiscal year 2022 conversations this Saturday morning at 8:30. Recognizing that COVID is still very much a part of our life, we will be running the budget workshops a little differently than we have in previous years where it'll be a hybrid setup similar to what city council and committee of the whole meetings have been, where much of the council's at the dais, the remainder will be at the table, staff will be here. But we will be live streaming budget workshops actually for the first time, so that our public can watch your conversation and updates on the city's financial position from the comforts and safety of their homes.
Thank you very much. And I'll just add, there'll be three consecutive Saturdays, and so we welcome everybody keeping an eye on what we're doing. So, let's see, we have two appointments and proclamations. So, we have an appointment, I'm sorry, one appointment and two proclamations. It's the other.
Your Honor, you have to do the committee of the whole report.
What if I don't?
Well, then you don't have to.
Thank you for keeping me squared away, Mr. Crum. Will an Alderman please move approval of the committee of the hall for January 6? Motion and a second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Thank you for keeping me tracking. We have one appointment and two proclamations. The appointment is to the Historic Preservation Commission. Alexander Wilga is a new appointment. I'll accept a motion. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we have two proclamations. One, the first one will be on slavery and human trafficking prevention and awareness month. Mr. Condon will read that one and present, and then we'll have National Mentor Month. Alderwoman McGinnis will read and present. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll read the proclamation today, and we're honored to have Senator Tinsman here to accept. We'll invite her to say a few words. Whereas the United States was founded upon a principle that all people are created with an eligible right to freedom, and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal, and whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims worldwide, and found in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage. And whereas this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom, and fuels organized crime, exists in every city. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts of our local community to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of the examples of the continuous commitment in the United States and the state of Iowa to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking. And whereas the city of Davenport joins Breaking Traffic, a program of Family Resources, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, comprehensive services to survivors of human trafficking. Now therefore, we, Mike Manson, Mayor of the City of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and do urge all citizens to join in its observance dated this 13th day of January 2021. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That moves a proclamation.
Well, first of all, my name is Maggie Tinsman, and I live at 2865 Hickory Hills Lane in Bettendorf, Iowa. But I'm very familiar with your organization as well, as I was a Scott County Supervisor a long time ago. But first, I just greatly appreciate Davenport passing this proclamation that declares January as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. As the initiator of the Iowa law making human trafficking a felony, I'm also the current Secretary of Iowa's Network Against Human Trafficking and the founder of Breaking Traffic, which is now connected with Family Resources. And so they joined me in doing this. So I thank you once again for recognizing how important this issue is. Now, I realize that trafficking or slavery occurring right here in the Quad Cities is indeed hard to believe, but it is right here in River City. So we need to have all our citizens learn about trafficking or slavery so that we can become part of the solution to this highness crime. I also like to thank you for initiating a local massage parlor ordinance last year, I think you did it. And I hope that your law enforcement personnel, who I've just talked to the key one, will continue to enforce it, as well as to look for human trafficking whenever drug raids are initiated, as drugs and human trafficking are closely connected. Another issue is hotel motel training. Iowa passed legislation last year for hotel motel training, thanks to Representative Gary Moore and Senator Robbie Smith. The law asks that hotels and motels train all of their employees on human trafficking, using programs through their hotel chain or the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking. If they do, the Department of Public Safety will furnish them with a state certificate recognizing that training, which would be prominently displayed in that hotel or motel. And this will allow the state and local governments to utilize this establishment for their activities. Otherwise, no government will utilize that business which has not trained their employees in human trafficking. And part of the reason for that is 85% of sex trafficking is done in hotels and motels. I'm not saying they're done in yours, but they're done all over. So we'd appreciate if your council would actually talk to your legislators locally about the importance of this bill, so that in 2021 session, which is now, it will be funded. The funding was not with it, and so they need to have funds in order to be able to do the job. So that would help. And also hand it out, you've got, I think, just today, the 2021 Network Against Human Trafficking priorities. And just quickly going through them, the first one is to adopt a safe harbor law. This is for the state, to eliminate charging minors or commercially sex-exploited individuals with prostitution, and also minor labor trafficking victims with crimes committed during the course of their exploitation. The second one, ask the legislature to pass a law for the expungement of crimes committed by human trafficking survivors which occurred while being trafficked. And the third one, ask the legislature to request schools to provide employees, parents, guardians, training, support, awareness, and prevention of child sexual harassment, exploitation, or abuse, and so that young people know themselves what that is. Because as I have told many of the young teenage girls, you are the market. So you are who everyone is looking for. So, the fourth one is asking the Iowa Supreme Court to adopt rules, or the legislature will enact legislation, to include extending rape shield protection to human trafficking victims in the rape shield law, which was passed way before we had human trafficking, or didn't know about it. And the last one, request the legislature to pass legislation for uniform local law enforcement authority regarding massage business that would expand rather than limit control. And that's what I want to talk to you all. You all passed such an ordinance, and I applaud you for that. So I'd ask you to take a look at that bill when it comes out. Senator Canoyer is going to be the sponsor in the Senate, just so that it doesn't hurt your ordinance. It's not supposed to. It's supposed to be definitely local control. It's just that right now, we only have 20 areas of the state that have ordinances about this. And so we have many unprotected areas of Iowa. So human trafficking massage can go on other places. But if you look at this bill to see that it helps you as well as local legitimate massage parlors, that would be great. If it doesn't, then you need to get ahold of us so we can see that it doesn't hurt your ordinance as well. So finally, I'd just like to say it's most important that I think our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. Like you, we want our communities to be family-friendly, a place of which we're extremely proud. And we are proud of Davenport. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tinsman. Very good words. And next, we'll have a proclamation for National Mentor Month, and Alderwoman McGinnis will read and present. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend who broadened our horizons and brought purpose to our lives, and whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success, and whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community, and whereas research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarcerations, and avoid delinquent behavior, and whereas there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want a positive role model in their lives, and whereas our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to mentor children in our community, and now therefore, we, Mike Manson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentor Month, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through Big Brothers, Big Sisters, dated this 13th day of January 2021. I move the proclamation. All in favor? And we have Anne Frost from Big Brothers here at Big Sisters.
My name is Anne Frost. I live at 2629 East 28th Court in Davenport. I just want to thank you for recognizing the importance of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the organization, and all mentor programs. And if any of you have not ever been a mentor to a young child, please think about that. It's a couple hours a month, and you know, the impact that it has on the future of these children is powerful. I spend a few hours each month with my little, and actually, she'll be at Central next year with us, and I'm looking forward to that. So, it's just, it is important that we do try to build up our youth so that we have a better future for, not just them, but for us. As we're getting older, we're going to need some people to take care of us as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I thought you'd bring your dog. It's a wonderful addition to Central. Anybody who goes there, there's a wonderful little dog that walks around. Not little, though. Okay, next, thank you. We have an interesting presentation this evening to recognize folks that helped with the Railroad Task Force. For folks that aren't knowing, we formed a group a bit ago to look at the riverfront and how the railroad maneuvered our front, and then how to bring it back to some form that'll be happy with everybody. And so, I'm pleased to just take a moment and honored to recognize a few folks here, and we're happy that some showed up. But it's just, goes to show the working relationships that people have when they really want to do something, because sometimes groups or big organizations don't want to talk with people because they just do what they do. So this group was able to establish a rapport and a working relationship and maneuver with our friends in Canadian Pacific and the railroad to help Davenport at least try and maneuver through the discussion of what's the railroad doing, raising the tracks and working on our riverfront, and we're not involved. So, this group worked through that, did that, and I think the citizens of Davenport will find that through their work and advocacy and negotiation, quite frankly, there's a nice product, and it's going to work out for all. So, I know some people aren't here, but I'm going to read all the names, and if you are here, if you just come up by the podium so we can recognize you together in a socially-distanced way. So, Alderman Kyle Gripp, Alderman J.J. Condon, Alderman Rick Dunn, Alderwoman McGinnis, and Ms. Kelly Groves wasn't able to be here tonight with the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Dee Brimmer I Ducey with the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Bill Ashton, I don't think I see him, so with the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Pat Walton with the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Nicole Gleason, our Public Works Director, Brian Schott, our City Engineer, Zach Peterson, our Landscape Architect, Steve Arons, who's the Riverfront Improvement Commission Executive Director, and then our former Finance Director, Brandon Wright. So if everybody would just take a moment and give them a nice applause for their wonderful work. And then if my colleagues behind us, we just want to stand up as, so we don't look weird, and as Jerry takes a picture of this wonderful group. Do you need them to get a little closer? Or can you maneuver that? He's a magician with the cameras. Thank you. And an extra applause for these folks. Thank you for your service to our city. Thank you for your service to our riverfront and doing the work that you did, and it was a lot of time that you put in for the wonderful pay that we gave you. So, again, thank you for, especially our citizens, Ms. Brimmer and Mr. Arons back there, and then everyone else. I appreciate your time. We move to petitions and communications. Ms. Spiegel said it, but the work sessions are coming up this Saturday and the next couple Saturdays. So, any of my colleagues on the council, I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yes, just a small thing. I did the new, I'm going to get it wrong, click, what, save, whatever. Say what?
See, click, fix.
That's right. See, click, fix. Anyway, I did, I sent a note out to the third ward about that when it came out, and I heard that from two people that had already tried it and really liked it a lot. So, I downloaded it. It was fast. I haven't really used it yet, but I'm sure I will find a purpose to do that. But in any case, it was getting nice reviews the first day out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. I heard someone else up top?
Judith Lee?
Ms. Alderwoman Lee, please.
Yes, thank you. I want to remind people that my ward meeting for eighth ward will be Thursday at 6 o'clock. Nicole Gleason will come and speak, and I'm sure there'll be questions about snow removal, which is, it's moving forward, and thank you for all your help, Nicole, as well as any other questions about projects that are ongoing or coming to be planned. So I hope to have a good response. It will be virtual again. Again, I don't want to bring people together with any chance of spreading COVID. So it will be virtual. The information for logging on is at the city website, as well as, there's been information gone out by email, Nextdoor, and other ways to push this. So I look forward to hearing Nicole and seeing my constituents again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to say that typically, on the third Tuesday of the month, we have fifth ward meetings, but because of a conflict with an extended P&amp;Z meeting and also the busyness of the holiday season, the January one will be postponed, and we'll kick those off again in February going into the new year. I also wanted to point out that while we have Big Brothers, Big Sisters in here, typically, they have their big putt around, putt-a-thon, mini golf activity, which isn't happening this year because of COVID. They are still doing their fundraiser this time in the form of a trivia contest that you can sign up between, I think it's now and the end of the month, I want to say, but that is located on their website, and that is still a great activity that we all can do from our homes in a safe socially-distanced way to still support them monetarily if we don't have the time to be a big for someone in their group. So I thought that was a relevant announcement for that proclamation that was read today.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Anyone else? I'll pause here. Okay, very good. We'll move on to the individual approval of items on our discussion agenda. The first one is a second consideration for an ordinance amending Schedule 5 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Four Way Stop Intersections by Adding Kirkwood Boulevard at Eastern Avenue." Is there any public that would like to comment? Will an Alderman, there's a motion? And a second. Is there any other discussion from any Alderwoman or Aldermen? I'm pausing.
Judith Lee?
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Again, as Alderman Jobchin said, this is a safety issue, and we already had to do that at Veterans and Eastern. And I normally do not support a suspension of the rules, but in this case, again, as a safety, I will support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, just to give some background on this four-way intersection, it's one that has been brought up to me by several different residents in the area about it being dangerous. And the problem is coming down Eastern off of Locust, so going southbound, when you're looking to your west up Kirkwood, the berm there and the way that Kirkwood kind of snakes around at that specific intersection makes it hard to see your westbound traffic coming, which has caused, I believe when Gary looked, it was seven accidents in the past year, that we're hoping this four-way stop sign will avoid that in the future. So, that's the kind of history behind it and why it is a safety issue.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderman Jobchin?
If no further comments, then now is the appropriate time. I just make motion to suspend the rules.
We'll get there. I got that.
Gotcha.
Roger that. Anyone else? Very good. Okay. Brian, please call the roll for second consideration.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dorman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. Now, it moves to third consideration. Now, the committee of the whole recommends suspension of the rules in passage. Is there a motion for suspension of the rules? Motion?
I move to suspend the rule.
There's a motion and a second. Very good. The rule, Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose? Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. The rules are suspended. Now, I'll ask for a motion for passage on third consideration. Motion and a second. Brian, roll call for third consideration.
Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That passes. Okay, the next item is a resolution placing a moratorium upon the issuance of special use permits for bars and minor vehicle repair service in C1 neighborhood commercial zoning districts and two-family conversions in R3, R3C, R4, and R4C, single and two-family residential zoning districts until July 13, 2021. Is there any public with comment? Please, sir, step to the podium. If you'd give your name, address, or ward, and if you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from. And you'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Mike Schroeder, 510 West 7th Street, Third Ward, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the moratorium as proposed by Alderwoman McGinnis and Alderman Dunn. In fact, I would urge the council to consider making the moratorium permanent. Some quick background, my wife and I'm Some quick background, my wife and I moved to the Hamburg Historic District, just a few blocks from City Hall in the spring of 1995. Immediately prior to that, the neighbors in that area had worked together to work for the permanent downzoning in that part of the city. The intention of that effort was to promote single-family residential ownership and responsible ownership of rental properties, that is. The effort was a huge success. The neighborhood enjoyed something of a renaissance with reduced crime noise, reduced noise, and enhanced livability. For the past 25 years, it has been a great place to raise a family. Allowing the zoning board of adjustment to make exceptions, as has been the practice recently, renders the new zoning code, in my opinion, ineffective. Our experiences in our neighborhood have shown me that promoting individual ownership is the surest, individual residential ownership, that is, is the surest way to make the central city both safe and livable. Turning single-family homes into duplexes is a special concern and needs to be avoided due to increased density, population density, and we need to be careful about allowing businesses to open in areas that are best suited for residential living. In short, we want to, if we want to promote residential ownership and responsible rental ownership in the central city, enacting the proposed moratorium is a must. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. There's a motion and a second to move. Any comments from alderwomen or aldermen? I'm pausing. Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I brought up concerns last meeting about the specifically bar section of this moratorium, and although I still do have concerns with the way C1 is spread throughout the entire city, there are areas uptown where a bar is appropriate, and to hinder that for the next six months is fairly alarming. However, we did have Laura do some research for us and check to see how many of our special uses have been pulled for the past year, and it was one for bars specifically, and I thought maybe that was because of COVID. So I asked her to go back and check in 2019 as well to maybe get a more baseline year, and that was zero. So this use is very small right now, which leads me to be okay with the next six months of really rethinking this and finding a better way to have a more long-term solution for this, which I still would want to be able to promote bars, especially in some of these areas that have more of a commercial overlay and more room for commercial areas to grow while not burdening some of the more residential C1 zones that are in some of the other wards. So I know it's a fine line to play, and I'm looking forward to those discussions we'll have with staff over the future.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Mr. Schroeder said, Alderman Dunn and I brought this forward with the discussion from participation of Alderman Grip as well in the discussions that led in front of it. And I do want to recognize, I hope this is the beginning of a very good discussion about this. Again, I think our zoning code was an immense effort, very, very badly needed, but you know, as you start to experience and live the zoning code, then you see perhaps some tweaks. So, and to Alderman Ambrose's concern about six months, I hope that we can begin immediately working on this, having, you know, good discussions, which we started having last week, and I was really pleased to see that, and that if, you know, if we can move more quickly, I'm certainly open to it being less, but I do understand that the process itself takes a couple of months. So we will try to move with haste, deliberate haste, and also making sure that we're listening to everybody in this conversation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Very good. Brian, please call the roll for this resolution.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Ann Peacock?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. The resolution is adopted. And then our next item on the agenda tonight is our motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda. Motion and a second? Brian, please call the roll.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Ann McGinnis? Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. Consent is adopted. Next item is, are there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions, motions? There are none this evening? Is there any public with business? Hearing, okay. Mr. Handel, I saw you here. I assume when you bring your art to, your art ware, I assume we're going to talk about something.
Sorry. Phil Handel, Fourth Ward, Davenport, also Nashville, Tennessee. Thanks for the opportunity to talk with us. Happy New Year, everyone. Good to see you again. Came in last night, and as always, beautiful entrance to the city on River Drive, and you can see in the distance, the Centennial Bridge lit up, and it lets me, reminds me how important it is to do something that everyone can enjoy, no matter what they spent and what they own, and how a very simple thing, such as lighting a bridge, especially a beautiful bridge, can do wonders for our city, and it has over the years. Just briefly, I think we already talked about this. Let's talk about the riverfront very briefly, and this is the RDG Plan, the Dawquis Arts Plan. In the past, I've talked about that I think it's a very wasteful plan. It's a plan that I would not recommend because it's abolishing four blocks of riverfront wall, both concrete and limestone. And what are we doing? We're rebuilding more wall, essentially paying for it twice. And what I, so, but on the other hand, I can understand people of the Riverfront Commissioner, or they're saying, well, all right, you got something better? I mean, this is our plan. I mean, you're disapproving of it, but can you come up with something better? Well, yes, yes, I think I can. And I've put together a plan for the riverfront, also a plan for the downtown area parking plan, hotel rooms, green space to link six or seven of our downtown areas. But right now, I want to talk about something that's very germane to next spring, which is the re-establishment of the, our beautiful ballpark and the Dave Heller's River Bandits under new, was I guess, Kansas City instead of Houston like it had been in the past. One of the things, it's always thought to be a nice addition to our beautiful park, which is considered one of the best in the country, is a mascot statue, like many ballparks, both big league and minor league have. We've got one of the most attractive, I think, mascots, the Rascal, the raccoon, but nobody's, you know, it's been what, 15 years since the ballpark has been renovated. I think now, given the travails that Mr. Heller has gone through, both with the flood in 19 and last year's COVID, it would be nice for the city to partner with him to create a statue of the Rascal mascot. I think everybody that goes to the ballpark would appreciate it, and I think it'd be a wonderful addition. I was out there the other day, and it seems to me that was the perfect place for it. I think, in fact, the designers of the ballpark actually meant for that to be right at the exit of the double arches down the bottom of the steps, there's a paved area. Looks like they planned for that, but it never came to fruition. And I think now's the time, and I'm willing to spend any time I can with anybody with the city to, and Mr. Heller, to make that happen next spring. I think it'd be a wonderful thing. I've got, there's a artist, son of a friend of mine in Austin, one of the best artists, I think, sculptors in the country, he did a roadside attraction for a pecan stand near Austin, like a 10-foot-high squirrel. And if you saw it, I'll send it to you, you'd say, this is really good. But that's not all he did. He was also a sculptor for the Statue of LBJ that you see when you visit the LBJ Library in Austin. He did that about 10 years ago in bronze, very nice statue. I think he'd be ideal. He would turn it not into just a piece of pop art, but you'll see the thing I'll send to you, it's like an alive kind of a thing. It's well worth having a real good artist come up with it, and perhaps we could get, you know, somebody like him to produce it and then go out for bids for the construction of the statue. I think it's something that'd be done between now and the spring. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Handel.
We'll get to this later.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Anyone else, public? Hearing and seeing, no one else? Any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? None? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Wear your mask and be safe.